Good.
Good evening, everyone.
Recording in progress.
A call to order Tuesday, August 22, 2023, Town Council Committee of the Hall to order at 6:32. All councilors are present for a quorum of nine. Calendar and Communications, Counselor Gajewski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the RTM meeting on August 9, 2023. So that was 13 days ago, almost two weeks now. And then also last Tuesday, I visited the City of Groton Farmer's Market at Washington Park and saw all the local farmers and small businesses. And I just wanted to commend the city mayor in Groton, City Parks and Recs for the great job that they do there. It's wonderful, and it is open until the end of October every Tuesday through the sixth. So I recommend that some people check it out. And then last week, I had the pleasure of meeting with the town manager, who briefed me on all issues, particularly to Groton, especially the ones that were discussed in executive session. And I am all caught up to speed as a new counselor. And then lastly, I ran into a constituent in the community who had some questions about construction going on on Allen Street. And I referred them to the town manager and got some answers back on that issue.
Thank you. Counselor Parker?
I, too, attended the RTM meeting, both in person and online. I've attended several TVCCA meetings, received communications. We received thank you letters for contributions that the town council voted on during budget season, communication regarding the Veterans' Memorials, invitation to the Outer Light Brewing Brewery for their upcoming event with their mural, parking meters, Board of Ed updates, and congratulations to Kim Shepherd Watson on achieving her Certified Board of Education member. International Awareness, International Overdose Awareness Day is August 31, 2023. Thank you to Groton Town Police Department for doing compliance checks in located area and working with our local gas group with that and ensuring that students or young people are not buying alcohol. And Community Foundation of Eastern Connecticut has opened their 2023 Women and Girls Grant Cycle, and that closes on October 30. That's all I have to report. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, one more thing. I did attend the airport open house on Saturday, and they are doing flying for our young groups, young adults, and as well as the younger age group. I did post that on my page, Facebook page, and I will get this information over to the town manager. So if young people would like to learn about flying, it'd be a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
Thank you. I attended the Sutton Park Revitalization Meeting. I also had a conversation with Mr. Jim Streeter, who's our town historian. And on one topic, we did discuss the Veterans Memorial Corner Dedication that's coming up in tonight's meeting. I attended the Public Safety Committee meeting this evening with Counselor McBride, as well as the town manager and representatives from Poughkeepsie Bridge Fire Department. I also watched a couple of town meetings as well this past week or so, including the RTM and I would say a few others. And I did have a few conversations with some members in the community regarding cannabis funds that are coming to Groton and inquiries to, if we have any locations, and how much, and do we know how much we're anticipated to get? So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received various communications and emails during the last two weeks, as did other counselors. Also went last week to the Sutton Park Improvements meeting, which was terrific, was at the community center. They just brought us up to speed on where the plans are for that at this moment and where they're looking to go. And it's exciting to see kind of as this thing starts to take shape. So that was a pretty interesting. And then I just wanted to highlight, I'm just calling this a Groton success story. I think it's just important. I do, as most people know, I do a lot of work with Groton Open Space, GOSSA. But this is a success story between GOSSA, the Groton Open Space, and the Groton School Department and the Groton Parks and Recs. Recently, from a chance meeting that was last October, GOSSA reached out to the, excuse me, to the school department and started to get, has built a collaborative relationship for students for guided hikes on GOSSA properties. The students get to walk and learn about and experience nature while on the trails. This relationship has also extended to the Groton Summer Camp, the summer with Parks and Rec and Thrive 55. And it's been a great success with all these partners. And just to give you an idea, with the Groton Public Schools field trips, they have done seven hikes with 627 children, 50 staff and chaperones. The Summer Camp hikes with the Parks and Rec Department, five hikes with 206 children, 40 staff. I got to lead one of those. That was a lot of fun with third graders. Thrive 55 hikes with senior group, we got three hikes with 70 hikers. And Trails Day hike, we did, it was one hike with 40 adults. So it's a total of 16 hikes and over 1,000 hikers have come out. So it has just been a real win, especially on the school department side, with the kids and getting out into nature. And what it has also done is brought a lot of parents who actually didn't know anything that these parks and these trails even existed here in town. So that's been a nice eye-opener for everybody. And I think everybody should be proud of this just really nice collaborative relationship. That's what it'll be all, so.
Very good. Counselor McBride?
Hi, good evening. This is Counselor McBride. Thank you. I just wanted to say, I'm not sure, it's hard to hear on Zoom. The only one I really heard was Counselor Jones. So I'm not sure if it has to be amplified or not, but I couldn't really hear anyone else. In any event, my update is, brief, attended the Connecticut Deep Bottle Bill Advisory Committee meeting this past week. And this evening, I'm not sure if Counselor Franco discussed it or not, we had a meeting of the Public Safety Committee, and we'll be presenting our findings. I think it's on September 11th, the Committee of the Hall. So hopefully that moves forward. Other than that, that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bordalon?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, because at my last meeting, I had stated that the relief fund for COVID for my husband, who works at the state for the prison. In fact, he did receive it. It came much later, but he did. I did also receive an email about it after from Jean-Claude Anblas, the Democratic Chair of the city, who watched the meeting and was wondering as well. But this is the first meeting I got to say something. So in fact, yes, it did. But my point was, there were a lot of professions where people were frontline and didn't receive any relief funds. So just piggybacking off that. I also attended the RTM meeting. I also attended the Historic District Committee meeting. I received emails regarding the Proprietary Use Committee. Let's see, what else? I received a call regarding Allen Street and Library Street, traffic on Library Street, people not stopping at the stop signs, and concerns that there was going to be a possibility of signage change that people were concerned about diverting traffic down Allen Street. And I advised them to reach out. I, too, received that invitation for the ribbon cutting at Outer Light for the mural. I'm really excited about that opportunity. I think it's a nice visual coming off the highway for the City of Groton. I'm proud to say that that's my cousin who did the mural. He's an amazing artist, and I look forward to attending that. And I think it will be a great event, so looking forward to that. I also attended the Westerly Town Council meeting. I have a friend who serves on the council there in Westerly. And it was interesting, because they were voting in a new, they call it president there versus mayor. And instead of their attorney, they call it the solicitor versus the attorney. So it's a little different. But it was interesting to see the difference in the structures and the way things were set up. Definitely felt like their platform was a little bit more ahead. All counselors were issued a laptop. Attorney attends every meeting, so counselors can speak directly to the attorney in live time. So it doesn't have to go through the manager through an email. And the council, you know, pretty much with the attorney was able to run the meeting. The town clerk restated all the motions. So if there was a clarification about what was stated, the clerk was typing in real time. So it just was a different structure. I'm sure they have some things that are not so, you know, great compared to what we have. But it was interesting, and it's great to always look at different ways government is set up. But it seemed to run very smoothly. When a motion was made, you were able to ask the attorney right there, counselor to attorney, is this the right motion? And it was just moved in a much smoother fashion in the sense of they would say things like, is this basically answer your questions? Thank you.
Counselor Westerville?
Thank you very much. By the way, the audio is much better now. I have nothing to report at this time, though.
Thank you. Counselor Jacom?
Thank you, Mayor. Some events, just so the public's aware, there's a back-to-school event Sunday, August 27, from 12 to 3 p.m. at the 50 Plaza Court in Groton, Connecticut. Free books and bags and school supplies and haircuts. So please feel free to stop there. I also attended the Sutton Park Redevelopment Forum meeting, the airport open house and the RTM meeting, similar emails. And I did want to give a shout out as well to the city mayor in Groton Utilities, because I was at a party this weekend on Maple Drive, and there was a pipe burst. So, and they responded quickly, so I appreciate that. There's also a Community Speaks Out event on August 31 at 6 p.m. at Ocean Beach Park for the youth group. The event is overdose awareness event, so please attend that if you can. Thank you.
Thank you. I attended a open house for Larrero Engineering. They just moved into a new location. They were previously on 117. They've now moved over to the city. So it's a bigger location. It's a newer location. They were excited to be in the new building. They're excited for the future. They particularly like being near EB. So I think that's just a better spot for them. They think so, too. So congratulations for that. I also, earlier today, was with the Lieutenant Governor. She was over at the Mystic Seaport Stonington Side. And she did a press conference on the Connecticut Summer at the Museum, which ends September 4. So families have, until September 4, you can go to any, essentially any museum in Connecticut. Children 18 and under are free of charge as long as they have an accompanying adult per child. So definitely take advantage of that. That ends September 4. We have participating in Groton Submarine Force Library and Museum, Avery Cop Museum, and the Mystic Museum of Art. So with that, I'll move on to the approval of minutes. Make a motion to approve the August 8, 2023 minutes. So moved, moved by Melendez, seconded by Jones. Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously, nine in favor. Onto new business, Veteran Memorial Corner Dedication. So this originated from Counselor Jones. I don't know if you have some presentation you'd like to give?
I do, yeah. Okay. I think I can do it from here. Should we do the motion or the motion after the presentation?
Let me do the presentation first.
Okay.
It doesn't.
So this was something that evolved out of Memorial Day celebrations and became, and remembered something that I used to participate in when I lived in Massachusetts. On Memorial Day, we did a celebration and for war memorial, for war veterans in that town, and thought this would be a great place to do it here in Groton. So I'll just sort of read through what I had done. This program is to honor the Groton wartime veterans, who died while on active duty during war or in conflict. The veteran does not, didn't have to die in combat, but lost their lives in the line of duty during a war or conflict. The goal is to honor and show appreciation to Groton residents for their contributions and sacrifice to our country. And the way that program was run and what I'm recommending here for this program was that we did corner memorials or street memorials that honored that different veterans, usually one a year, and it was done usually in their neighborhood. So it covered all branches of the military, veterans who had died at the time of conflict in the line of duty. The memorial dedication applicants would be initiated by a family resident, a regional VFW, or an American Legion post. The request goes to the Veterans Recognition Memorial Committee, which we're recommending to form such a thing, for selection and approval, intending for one with a max of two veterans per year. A memorial sign would be located near the veteran's family's neighborhood, generally on a cross street, a corner, a square, not in front of the house, but somewhere in the neighborhood. The sign would contain the veteran's name, branch of service, date of birth, year they died. Also include the word memorial. Recognition is mounted on a, generally on a metal post with aluminum sign covered in black with gold and lettering for a gold star family. The program, I envisioned it, but certainly the town manager would weigh in under the public works where they would handle the installation and anything that had to be done on the street. I envision a simple ceremony as an informal remembrance, honoring event attending a family and community along with veteran services and government personnel. Ceremonies generally be held on Memorial Day or Veterans Day. This program, a program like this is run in many parts of the country, not just where I was, but it's around the country. And sign fabrication is somewhere in the $200 to $500 range. The Veterans Recognition Memorial should consist of several Groton veteran residents. They will choose the veteran recognition from applicants and decide on a location, then work with public works or where is the correct department for location approval and installation. In the packet, I gave you some different examples of different signs that have been done. Sort of a general sign, looks like that, which shows how it gets very simple, post and sign, just some examples of different signs. Another program that's done in Colorado that's very similar, has a really good explanation of it in the packet. And then a sample application form, and then guidelines. So these are just samples that other communities are using. One's in New Jersey, one's in Colorado, to sort of do this kind of a program. I also just wanted to thank Jim Streeter, who dropped off this book that we had no idea about of memorials in this area. So I thought that was pretty good, so. So my motion for this, I hope you give support for it, is to create a Groton wartime Veteran Memorial Recognition Street Sign Program dedicated by the mayor and the council to honor Groton residents who died while on active duty in war or conflict.
Second, Franco?
Got a motion by Counselor Jones and a second by Franco. Have Counselor Franco?
Thank you. So I appreciate this motion that came forward. I am a big fan of it. I also spoke to Mr. Streeter, who had sent a town historian and who has also worked on many of the memorials in our community, and discussed with him maybe some gaps that we may have in our community. And with that, I'd like to make an amended motion. And I'd like to hand these out. I have them prepared in advance. So let me first say that back in December 7 of 1981, there was a resolution to establish an ad hoc war memorial committee. And that the Groton Town Council had recognized the many valent residents who had served in World War II, Korean, and Vietnam. And whereas one suitable memorial recognizing the veterans of all wars and military conflicts should be created and prominently displayed. And the town council established an ad hoc war memorial committee whose charge would be to identify each Groton resident who served in all wars and military conflicts since World War I and recommend to the town council a suitable memorial design, its location and construction cost. And that resolution that they had was adopted by the Counselor Kowzlawski and seconded by Counselor Kuseltruda. And they unanimously voted in favor of that establishing such a committee. So I'd like to make an amended motion to reestablish the former ad hoc Veterans and War Memorial Committee as a permanent committee, whose charge will be to upkeep recommendations, improvements to the Groton Veterans Memorial Park, as well as other war memorials in the town of Groton, and to devise and undertake programs to promote our veterans and local war memorials. With the appointment of five members for two-year terms, the appointments, including the chair, would be made at the mayor's discretion. No staff members would be assigned to the committee, and a committee secretary will take minutes in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act.
I'll second that.
Okay. So this is an amendment, so this is just adding on to what we previously had. I've got an amended motion by Counselor Franco and a second by Counselor Parker.
That's correct. I am in favor of this as a child of a disabled veteran who had actually passed away due to Agent Orange from my father's military career. I find this to be something that's very dear to my heart. And I would like to support this in all that I can. And I would hope that when we're establishing this, if passed, if we reestablish this, that Mr. Streeter would be participating in this committee as well. As when I did speak to him, he referenced that he was interested and would be like to take part in this. This would also give us a committee that if any of our memorials need upkeep or if they need some kind of funding for something, there is a committee that could come back to this council and ask for things or make recommendations as well. But also, such as the beautification committee, I think this committee would be able to raise funds and do things on their own without having to ask committee council approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Parker?
Yes, some of us that grew up here knew about some of these memorials. And a lot of people don't visit them as much as they probably should. If we can promote it more, that would be wonderful. And I think having that ad hoc committee to advertise and give background historical information on the families that came from Groton, not only to have these memorials, yes, I can understand the street signs and everything. So if we can get the schools involved and all these other places so that they can go and honor who we've lost in this town. I'm all in favor, so I would love to see this committee back and given the opportunity to promote more our history that we need, that we're not even being taught of it right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gajewski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to Counselor Jones for bringing this to the council. I love the idea, you know, being home to the Navy Base. And with the Coast Guard Academy being across the street, we have a lot of military veterans in our community. And I just think it is a wonderful project. And I also do support Counselor Franco's amendment to the motion. I appreciate you doing the research on this. And seeing that we did have an ad hoc war memorial committee at one point in our town, and I think it would be great, as we do have many monuments dedicated to those who have served our country. And I think it is just wonderful for our community. So I'll be in favor of the amendment and the motion on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jacom?
Thank you, Mayor. Now, I will reiterate, as some of the counselors said, I'm in favor of the motion and the amendment. My father is also a continuous service in the military and just all the veterans do, protecting our country and everything they sacrifice. I think this is amazing that we could dedicate at least a committee for them to look at these monuments, because as we said, I did not know that we had, I know we had monuments, but I didn't know we had, you know, 100-plus or 100 monuments dedicated here in the town. So that is just mesmerizing, and I'm in full support. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Counselor Franco for her amendment, which broadens out what I've done. I think it's a really nice way to sort of turn this into a permanent thing, turn it into a way that we can give support it with funds. They can come forward. I think it's just gonna, as Counselor Parker just said, give a lot more attention to the memorials that we have in town. And I think it's a pretty cool thing. Son of a, I'm a son of a World War I veteran, I mean, grandson of a World War I veteran, a son of a World War II veteran, sisters in the military, cousins in the military. So I come from, there's a lot of veterans in my background. So I think this is really great. And I also want to thank Counselor Franco for all the work. She has helped a lot in this, pulling this referral together. And so, much appreciated, so. And Jim Streeter, who, I bet this book is in our library. If not, it should be, but who has really opened our eyes to what we have around us. We just, we really just didn't know. And he has really helped shape, I think, where we've gone with this to where it is right to the moment, from the help of Jim Streeter. So a big thank you to him also, so.
Thank you. Counselor Westerville?
Thank you very much. And thank you very much, Counselor Jones, and also Counselor Franco for both of your motions. I support it wholeheartedly as a veteran and coming from a family full of veterans, having lived in Groton since 1984, serving with the Navy. Really appreciate when we can give back and find a way to support our veterans. I think being able to take care of all the monuments that we have, I think, is an outstanding idea. So 100% I support this, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Bordalon?
Thank you. I think this is great, any opportunity that we can do to honor our, you know, heroes that have fallen or have served in any way. Every year, we go to Nationals in Pennsylvania for marching band with my son and the high school. And in that town, usually around that time, they're having what they call hometown heroes. And they have banners probably the size of that screen with a picture of active-duty hero that a family member, they don't have to be fallen or died in combat, but they just honor active-duty who have served. And so having a committee like this that can be active in having ceremonies and things would be such an honor. And it really does brighten up the town. They hang these banners on the light posts with like two long rods, and it's a nice big picture, and it just, it's really cool. And some are people who have died in combat, some who just served and live in the town. Obviously, there's many details to go into this. I think these are both great motions. You know, the signage that Counselor Jones presented, you know, we'll have to, you know, this committee will be charged with, well, what if the person died in combat but no, lived in Groton at the time of combat, but no longer lives here? You know, we should definitely honor that person, too. So it'll be interesting to see how this will, and everyone kind of moves more. So a lot of people who have fallen necessarily don't reside in the same neighborhood anymore or town. So those details are fine, but I think these are great. As a mother who has a son serving on the USS Virginia here in Groton, and another son who's looking to serve as well, and like Counsel Jones stated, I, too, my grandfather, great-grandfather, World War I, World War II, you know, also did serve, this is, it's so important to to recognize in our town. So I'm just making sure the motion that Counsel Franco questioned through you, Mayor, is that will this also be allow them to hold ceremonies as well and fundraise for those types of things? That's my question. I just want to make sure it's worded that way, so it could, like the hometown heroes event. So if they fundraise enough and they said, okay, we've upkeep, we've upkept all the the historical, you know, the veterans' memorials, could they do a hometown hero event, which is, you know, a lot of towns are doing, which is really cool and would be something great to have here, where you, you know, identify current and past active-duty and military people who served? So that was my question.
Yep.
That would cover that.
Yes.
I think this is great, and I look forward to seeing it come in, you know, come around. And is, I guess my other question, too, is the one that was approved in December 7th, what happened to it? Do we know?
It was an ad hoc, sorry. It was December 7th, 1981. It was an ad hoc committee that was only ad hoc, have a limited duration. So once they finished that task, then it dissolved.
Yeah, I think it'd be great. I mean, I think, you know, it was brought up to like Old Mystic, the green there, and at one point, people were complaining, and I talked to John Burt, the town manager, about some people were saying they were mowing it, and no one knows who owned it. Well, there actually is a veteran memorial on that in Old Mystic. So I think the more that we can get a handle on what we have and how we can celebrate will be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McBride.
Thank you. I fully support Counsel Franco's motion to move that committee forward. I just have some questions, and maybe through the mayor to Counsel Frank or Counsel Jones. I'm just wondering, is this committee ultimately going to making the decisions on the signage? Because I do have lots of questions on the signage. I'm in support of it overall, but I'm just wondering, there's a lot of decisions that need to be made on that. Is that, will that be the committee's focus regarding the signage program? Not not the focus, a focus or responsible for decision-making?
Right. If you're asking me, the way it's written, it seems like they would have the, they would be the approving, they would take the applications and approve which names get street signs and organizing that whole thing.
Okay. Great. Thank you for the clarification. I support both of these motions.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll take a turn now. So first, I'm fully in support of this. Thank you, Counsel Jones, for bringing this forward. I, too, have a similar familial history. My father's retired Navy. My brother's in right now. My brother-in-law, uncle's in all branches of the military. And it's, it's sort of like, you know, a deep history of military tradition in my family. However, when you're someone from Groton, it's actually, as you can see, sort of typical. Everybody has these roots that go back generations, and that's sort of what makes our town so special. So I'm deep, I am super in support of this. I actually think that one of the first, and I'll put in a recommendation first, I think, apologize for not knowing his rank, I think probably William Sealy should be the first one to get a memorial. So if no one else will do it, I'll put that in because he, you know, he had a school up and and it's no longer. And I think he definitely deserves a memorial somewhere in town, a prominent one, as he died on Pearl Harbor. I actually had the privilege a few years ago. My sister, being in a military family herself, was stationed at the Hawaii base, and I was able to go visit her, and I was able to find his name on the wall. So that was a very special moment, and I think it'd be, it'd be a great moment to have a memorial specifically for him again in the town. But other than that, I'm in support of this, and thank you for bringing it forward.
Counsel Borlon.
Thank you. It'll be great, too, to see how we cast the net to get folks on this committee. One person, and I don't know that he would, it was brought up about Jacob Cothers, who happens to be my cousin, who's the artist that did the memorial, the mural. He got back into art because he lost his brother, my cousin, to combat, I don't remember the exact years, but over overseas, not that long ago. And he started getting into art as a way of, you know, he's always been artistic, but got more into it, and has expanded as a way of kind of dealing. So he, even though my cousin was not a resident of Groton when he got lost in combat, was killed in combat, he would qualify for the Groton one. But Jacob does live here in Groton in the city, and he might be someone who's really passionate after losing a loved one recently, and his artistic visual ability, he might be a great person to kind of be on there with, you know, Streeter, to kind of look at the signage and kind of help, you know, get this committee going, because it's still kind of near and dear to him within the last so many years. So I definitely will reach out to him. But again, I think this is great.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further discussion, we will first vote on Counsel Parker's amendment.
Franco's.
Counsel Franco's amendment, seconded by Counsel Parker.
We're twins.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. Care is unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Now we will vote on Counsel Jones's motion as amended. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. Care is unanimously nine in favor.
Nice.
Thank you, everybody.
So we are now on to the cannabis update. This originated from Counsel Jacob. Do you want to introduce it?
I'll do a little overview just quickly, then I'd like to pass it to the town manager, Mayor, and then back to me if that's possible. So as everybody knows, what's per law now, there's a 3% municipal tax now on cannabis, certain exemptions, that's in your packet as well. So I just asked the town manager if he can give a planning and zoning update, as everybody wants to know what's going on with the, you know, zoning for cannabis and how many, I think right now we have hybrid retailers that are going to be coming in, and how many businesses or retailers we have for that. So he'll give an update on that, and then I'll continue with my research.
Sure. Thank you. I'll cover a little bit of a summary of the act. Under Connecticut's 2021 recreational cannabis law, sales of recreational cannabis are generally subject to three taxes: a state cannabis tax based on the product's type and total THC, a 6.35% sales tax does apply, and then there's additionally a 3% municipal cannabis tax that's collected. Looking a little into, I think they collect it on-site, submit a report, and then, and then send it to the municipality. The taxes apply at the retail level to sales by cannabis retailers, hybrid retailers, and micro cultivators. Just to note, in a hybrid, it does not apply to medical cannabis, just to the recreational parts sold through a hybrid retailer. You can, in terms of what it can be used for, streetscape improvements and other neighborhood developments in communities where cannabis retailers, hybrid retailers, or micro cultivators are located, educational programs or youth employment and training programs in the municipality, services for individuals living in the municipality who are released from Department of Corrections' custody, probation, or parole, mental health or addiction services, youth service bureaus and municipal juvenile review boards, and lastly, community civic engagement efforts. Moving on to the actual town of Groton zoning, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved regulations for cannabis effective May 15th. And as we go into this, just to mention, we do have two approved applications through the Planning and Zoning Commission. One for, if you're aware of the already existing medical marijuana dispensary, Gold Star, the Curaleaf Hybrid, they were approved to start selling retail or recreational, and they are now doing so. There's also approval for just a recreational marijuana sales at, it's in, going to be a location, I believe, within the same building as O'Reilly Parts. So that hit, that building permit has not been issued for that yet, submitted for that yet. Going into the zoning, let's see, just hit a couple of the definition highlights. I'm on 28 right now. Cannabis hybrid retailer, which is again like the one on Gold Star, a person or business operated by, a person or business operated by a person that is licensed to purchase cannabis and sell cannabis and medical marijuana products, cannabis micro cultivator, a person or business operated by a person licensed to engage in the cultivation, growing, and propagation of the cannabis plant at an establishment containing not less than 2,000 square feet and not more than 10,000 square feet of gross base floor area prior to any expansion authorized by the commissioner, and cannabis retailer, a person or a business operated by a person excluding a dispensary facility and hybrid retailer that is licensed to purchase cannabis from producers, cultivators, micro cultivators, product manufacturers, and food and beverage manufacturers, and to sell cannabis to consumers and research programs. And this would be like the one on Route 1. And just to mention, we have no applications yet for micro cultivators, so it's part of this tax, but we don't have any coming in at this point that I know of. And just so people understand, if you go onto 31, cannabis micro cultivator, just so you know where those are allowed with with conditions, rural residential zone, commercial, regional, industrial, mixed-use, and industrial general. And then the cannabis retailer or hybrid retailer are allowed in commercial, regional, mixed-use town center, and industrial mixed-use. And that's what I have for some background.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So I'll just continue off that. So now cannabis, you know, recreationally being legal, the recreational use now brings new opportunities and obviously some concerns. The town manager kind of went over the municipality, those three taxes are there, but the municipality collects the one. So I also did reach out to local municipalities that also were having, going through the same processes of these. For example, so New London being closed, I did reach out to the mayor's office there, and he quote said, "They have not received any cannabis funds at this time, and they do not anticipate either approved businesses up and running anytime soon." But once they do have a revenue stream, that they would begin their work by bringing recommendations to the council. Next, I did reach out to another municipality, Stanford, which actually projected that they would have somewhere around half a million dollars, and they actually appropriated that in their budget. But as we know, as of June 20th, 2023, they only collected $77,500 from two hybrid retailers. So I just want to reiterate that, just because even the state had assumed that there would be a lot of funds coming in here, and that's not the case. It's very watered down, Massachusetts, New York, and multiple municipalities are opening up cannabis recreation retail stores. So I would not expect a hefty amount of money there. Speaking to one of their grant coordinators and staff in Stanford, their revenue would go to their general operating budget, and they would be tasking it to their youth service bureau, which is their, our human services department, and then aligning it with priorities per statute. I also reached out to a middle town, too, with no communicate, no response. And I did. So then I started thinking, where can these funds, I think, be maximized and used? So I reached out to Ledge Light and Groton Alliance for Substance Use Prevention, which is GASP. I had a conversation with them, and their funds are mostly made up of grants, grants, but it actually dictates what direction the organization is kind of pursuing. So currently, they have federal and state grants, which are completely focused on alcohol and vaping. So my concern would be that while these funds would be maximized, which should be maximized, there needs to be an up-and-running kind of organization already focused on a certain area. And for me, they didn't incorporate that. So I did decide to reach out to Community Speaks Out, and which, as you all know, but for the public, I'll say it again, is a 501(c). Simply, their goal is helping the affected, those affected by addiction. A little, a little bit about their makeup of organization, they're funded by donations, grants, and fundraising. They have a board of directors, and they have zero paid staff. So just so everybody understands, recently, they had a lack of funding from the state, so they didn't receive, it was about $20,000 in funding for their youth group. So actually, when having conversations with Tammy Dela Cruz, we talked about, you know, I was asking, what kind of groups do they have? They have a youth group, which is actually facilitated by a teacher and a social worker. They have a bunch of kids in there. They're helping these kids who are at risk, who are living with families with members who are suffering from addiction. These are only, these are one of our most vulnerable populations, and I think we can't forget that. These are the ones that are suffering, you know, socially and economically, you know. We also, there were some stories from some kids of all walks of life, kind of going day by day and suffering, and that they would never cross each other's path. But this group brought them together. They were able to express their concerns. They were able to express themselves, and I think they were, because of that, they were able to better themselves. So hearing those stories that actually, that's, were you able to help somebody? Then that's something, that's what our work here is for. Right now, they have a safe meeting space, but with, I think, with these funds specifically, the, the Community Speaks Out could allow for more events, more kids to continue with their prevention work throughout the community and within the school system, to protect our kids for future generations to come. And I think specifically, when you're looking at the allowable uses for the 3% tax, I think that they fall in a bunch of multiple categories, where, for example, mental health and addiction services. So with that being said, I hope for support, but welcome a discussion. I'd like to make a motion to move to recommend the Town Council authorize the fiscal year ending 2024 recreational cannabis municipal taxes be received by the town to be awarded to Community Speaks Out.
Second, Franco.
Okay, so I've got a motion from Counsel Jacob, seconded by Franco, F by E 2024 Cannabis Allocation, Cannabis Dollars allocated to Community Speaks Out. All right. Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counsel Jacob, for your presentation. I guess the question is directed to the town manager. When whoever the cannabis retailers are in the town, their money gets sent to the state, and then from reading through this, through the packet, they bill, the town then bills the retailers based on the amount of money that was, the 3% that was put away, and then it gets sent back to the, to the town. Is that?
I'm not so sure if the, if our dollars go to the state or not. They do have to supply a report. But if you look under page 25, how the taxes administered, it almost makes it look like they would send directly to us, but it could be the other way, like the OQOIs. It's, it's hard to, you know.
It could go in some varied path. When the money comes into the town, where does it go? What would, what would you do with it?
Well, the, the finance director would set up or to place them, just like OQOIs or any other individual type thing, to say, to track them separately.
So it would go into a bucket, just for that, for those uses?
Yeah, because you have to track them. There are only certain allowable uses, so yes, you have to track them separately.
Is the programs that, you know, Community Speaks Out is here, but maybe Counsel Jacob can answer it, the state funding that they didn't receive for their youth programs, that you're, that applies to like the educational youth training and/or training programs? Is that a direct, is that one of the uses that's designated for the 3%? Is that stuff goes to the educational youth employment training programs? Does their, the youth program that they didn't get funded, does that apply? Does that fit into that category?
That, Mayor, would like me to answer. I don't, I believe so. Is that, yeah, so, yes. I mean, if we would like to invite them here, I'd be more than happy. They are present here to invite them, but that's up to the mayor.
That's okay. I just, I want to make sure that it's going to the right. I'm in, basically in favor of Counsel Jacob's motion, and we have supported Community Speaks Out, and they do tremendous work here in the town. I just want to make sure that we're, we're able to, the correct relationship.
Yeah, my understanding is, if I could, is that these funds would, I think, it's up to, at the end with, at the end of it, go to the board, you know, the board of directors would figure it out. I have complete trust that they would figure it out, being zero paid staff and having multiple education fields that they are in, both in health and science, that they would direct the money where it needed to be. And I would prefer youth group, but I think where, they know where it's best to.
Tom, Andrew Bird, do you have a sense of how much money is, I know we have one establishment that's up and running right now. Do we have any kind of estimate of what we think the funds might be?
You know, they just, you know, started some recreational. It's hard to, it's hard to know. I had spoke with the Montville mayor, because they have one there. They're estimating about $58,000. Of course, having multiple here will dilute it some, so, yeah, you know.
It's somewhere.
Fifty to seventy. Fifty to 75,000, maybe. It's really hard. You just don't quote me on it, but if I had, if I absolutely had to give a range, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'm good.
Thank you, Councilor Bordalorn.
Oh, thank you. I think this is great, and I think it's, we're very thankful, you know, on the backs of things that people were fighting for, that, you know, some people don't want cannabis illegal, and then there's a profit out of it. We had the opioid crisis, and there's funds coming in from that. Obviously, most, most people, and addiction is a, is a huge problem, and it stems from a lot of different issues, from alcoholism, mental health, just someone who got addicted to painkillers in the past, and, you know, just peer pressures and community pressures. Some of it's just trend. I mean, there's so many things. But like the opioid funds, tonight, I think this is for me, the discussion to talk about what it could be used for. It's not that I'm against Community Speaks Out. I don't, it's not that I don't think the money shouldn't go there. I just don't agree with blanketly supporting a number that we don't know what it is for 2024 to one agency. I personally feel that we should be opening this up, as I said, with the opioid money that we, we allocated to Community Speaks Out. That was the only agency we gave money, which was great. That's a great organization, and they should be funded, and I think they should get a percent of this as well. But I feel uncomfortable until we put this properly on the floor and then send some type of request out. So my question, question to the town manager, have we reached out openly to other agencies yet to let them come before us to seek any of this money?
I haven't. I, again, Councilor Jacob was doing the research on different agencies.
But the town has not, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's been no, no posts, no outreach, no, you know, this is just looking at what can be done now that we have the zoning and all of that. So as much as I want to give 100% to Community Speaks Out, I'm also elected to look at everything at large, and so for me, if I abstain or vote this down, it's simply because I want to make sure that other agencies have a fair shot, and I feel that they should apply and come before the council, and then we should then delineate which agency, to be fair. And in the end, it might be Community Speaks Out as the top one, but we, tonight, this is our first read of this, this policy. And it's great that the one agency is here, but we need to make sure that we're opening it up to everybody fairly, equally. And I, I think for me, I don't want to hear that other agencies have, had not had a fair shot to come before us. The money's not even here yet, so I don't feel like there's a rush. There's no money sitting and waiting. Is there any money in our hands yet, town manager?
No.
No, so.
The first one just got up and running.
So I, I would encourage the council to hold on this, and I think it's great that Community Speaks is one of your selections, but we have to make sure that we're opening it up to everybody. And I think this should be another agenda item, and I think there should be some advertising on our pages, just like we do for outside resources and other things, to make sure that we are, because there's things on here like many other options. There's six things that are delineated on here that it can be used for. And, you know, again, if we get $100,000, maybe, you know, Community Speaks Out is getting 75,000, and 25 is going in something else. And we are already allocating our opioid funds went to Community Speaks Out, so I just want to make sure we're spreading our, our money throughout the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted, Counselor Jones had mentioned how the money flows. So at the end of each, I just pull up the law. At the end of each month, the, the cannabis seller retailer sends a report at the end of each month to the state. The state gives that information to the town. However, the retailer provides it, the funds within 60 days after that report directly to the town. So it does not flow to the state, but they do track it.
Counselor Franco?
Thank you. I'm in support of your motion, Counselor Jacob. I, when we discussed the opioid money, we discussed other options within our community, and those options are very small. I thank you for contacting Ledge Light and for contacting GASP and getting the information from them and where they stood on the matter. I, I do notice that when some of these items come to the council, which is a community, it, it affects our whole community. Community Speaks Out is in the audience. They're here, and they're engaged, and they know what's going on in our community on all different levels. I think our room was full of people that have, have suffered with addiction, and they came to us as a council, and they showed us how important that organization was to them. And with that, there, there could be other things that we could do with some of this funding. There, there is. We could put in some roads. We could do infrastructure. We could do some parks. But you know what? I, I think it's more important, the residents of our community who suffer the most with addiction and their families and their, and their youth, their children are taken care of, and that we take care of those people. So yes, we could do roads and all these other infrastructures, but I think those people are more important than parks and a road. I also think that, I, I, I was sort of wondering, did planning and zoning put in any kind of criteria that there could only be a cannabis store within certain miles of another cannabis store?
Yes, if you look in the packet under, one second, please. If you look under page 34 in your agenda packet, you'll see down towards the bottom under 5.1-15.8A, number one, distance between establishment. No building or premises or part of any building or premises shall be permitted for adult-use cannabis use if the lot upon which said building or premises is located is within 1,500 square, if, within 1,500 feet from any lot on which another permitted adult-use cannabis use is located. There's something about how to determine that distance. And then under two, distance from protected uses, no building or premises or part of any building or premises shall be permitted for adult-use cannabis use if the lot upon which said building or premises is located is within 1,500 feet from any lot on which a protected use is located. For purposes of this section, a protected use shall include elementary or secondary school, whether it's public, private, parochial, church, or other place of worship, hospital, charitable institution, veterans, home, or camp, barracks, for armed forces.
All right. Thank you. Many people have asked that question, but I am in support of your motion. I think for the first year, we will, I, I would be in favor of allocating these funds, and then, and maybe we figure out what we could do in the, in the future. But I will be supporting your motion. I thank you very much for doing all the homework and bringing it forward. I commend you. Thank you.
Counselor McBride?
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Jacob, for bringing this forward. I fully support Community Speaks Out and all its efforts. However, I cannot get behind or support a motion that appropriates funding with the dollar amount not being known. I don't think it's proper. I don't think it's fiscal, I don't think it's good due diligence, so therefore I can't be supportive of the motion. I would be completely supportive of the motion if the number was known. Once the number is known, and we can go forward and have discussions, but in, in my, in my understanding, it's not proper to appropriate funding when you don't know what the amount is. So for that reason, I will, will not be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bordalorn?
Oh, thank you. Again, you know, I know it was stated, you know, not for Road to Streets, that, that was not my intention of other funding. It's, there are other agencies. Other agencies need to grow. There are other things that support, like, you know, people being released from prison and other things. We're already allocating all the money from opioid to Community Speaks Out, which I think is wonderful. I just want to make sure we're spreading it to other agencies. You know, we have to make sure that we are helping to support them equally throughout the town. If you cede one thing, then what else do you have? That's all I'm saying. And I can't blanketly support a number without knowing it. If it was 100,000, we gave them 50, or 50 to something else, or 25 to something else, but there's a lot of other services of getting housing for people being released, released from the DOC, and all they work with is not even addiction, just housing and other things. There's a lot of other programs. And tonight, I guess the question for the town manager is, the agenda states that we're reviewing the policies, so we have to suspend the rules to now, we're going to now allocate money, which is not on our agenda. So that's my question.
This is a future utilization of funds. I, I, I had actually thought about that and looked at it, but I believe it's okay.
Yeah, because I don't think people were aware tonight that we were going to be voting on allocating funds to anybody. So again, we don't have a number, and I think it's a great agency, but I just think tonight, we, we're not operating in the realm of the agenda. It doesn't state that you, we're going to allocate, you know. I, I think if that was the case, I would have also seeked out to some more agencies to come if I knew that there was a chance money was going to be allocated. I think this needs to be put out to the public, put out in, on our, on our page, and, and send letters out through saying that we have this money, like we have opioid funds, and ask other people if they want to apply. If no one else applies, then that's great. And I do agree with Counselor Franco that it should go directly to the people who are hardest hit, especially in the first year, which would be to help combat addiction, homelessness, and food insecurities, and folks being released from prison for housing. But as an elected official, from a fiduciary standpoint, I feel I cannot allocate money that I'm not aware of what it is. We don't have it. It's not sitting, so I ask this council to slow down, and let's wait for the money to come in, and let's make up a plan. It's a simple meeting, and let's get some more agencies around the table in the meantime. And I'm sure Community Speaks Out, who does a wonderful job in our community, will be at that table as well. So it's not even on the agenda, and it, it just, I think we need to slow down. Thank you.
Counselor Westerville?
I agree that I, I do not feel that it would be fiscally irresponsible for us to allocate money that we have no idea what that dollar amount's going to be. Also, granted, Community Speaks Out, I do, I do believe in them. I support them. However, I don't think that anybody else who has something similar, has other things to offer to the community, or aware that this was going to turn into a allocation vote, as opposed to just a discussion of the policy. So I just, I can't support the motion. I do, I do support what it's for, however, I just can't support giving money away that we have no idea what that dollar amount's going to be. Thank you very much.
Counselor Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've heard different things, and we did this during the opioid discussion, too. Many people, our information's posted online. Agendas are out there. The communities that are involved will be looking at our agendas. Things are announced, so it's not like it's not put out there for the public. Two. Counselor Jacob researched and spoke with people to get their opinion about stuff. Three, we did this, again, I'm going to reiterate it, during opioid, and all counselors were supposed to talk to different organizations, which at the time, I believe the young group from Grasso did a fundraising thing, not fundraising. What's the word I want? Had an event where there were different organizations, and some of them were not in Groton. So what we're trying to do is keep it local, even though families probably be traveling outside the area. We're trying to keep this local to help our residents here. I can understand the concerns about the dollar amount, which we do not know, but on the same token, they lost funding from the state for our youth group, for their youth, and that was $20,000. So they're trying to figure out how to help our youth. If it's more, then I'm okay. This is helping our community, and there's a lot of people who are suffering. And you guys really don't know how many are suffering. So my suggestion is, if you guys have concerns, then don't vote on it or abstain. Do what you have to do. But my concern is making sure that we're protecting who we have in our community right now. Thank you.
Counselor McBride, is that a hand?
I'm sorry, it's not. I'll take it down.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion for 20,000 for them to recoup what they've lost, and then that way, it settles that part.
Is there a second? Okay. Counselor Guyaski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am torn, and the reason I'm torn is Community Speaks Out is the gold standard of, in addition with GASP and all the great groups, they are the gold standard of helping with addiction in our community. And they are active in our community. They are in our schools. Being a relatively recent graduate of Fitch High School, Community Speaks Out was the first organization that came into the schools in my 13 years in the school district that was from Groton, and they impact the community of Groton. I also, I am hesitant to blindly support 100% of the money allocated, just because we don't know what that number is, and it could be millions of dollars, and we could be spreading that out to other organizations. And organizations like these, they want to support one another. They're, they all have the same goal, is they want to help individuals with addiction. So I'm going to make an amendment, and that amendment is, I would like to allocate 75% of the money for fiscal year '24. So it's not necessarily, we're still supporting Community Speaks Out, a gold standard organization, but also, we're protecting ourselves fiscally if it's an absorbed amount of money.
You need a second. Second?
Okay. Manager Burt, just one second.
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in. This is obviously the pure policy issue, not an operations issue, but sort of along the lines of Counselor Guyaski. Fully supportive, but because we don't know could be how or much money, I prefer, myself, a hard cap, you know, like 100,000, whatever it is. But again, this is pure policy. I support whatever the council does, but I think it's hard to not know exactly what you're asking, for instance, the RTM to approve up to.
So you said 75%.
So with that information, could we do 75% capping at $100,000 with that?
Okay, so you're saying?
Yeah, let's do.
All right, let me, let me withdraw my second.
Withdraw your second.
I withdraw my second.
My new amendment is allocate 75% of the money allocated to Community Speaks Out of our fund from marijuana, local taxes, and then, but however, that amount caps at $100,000.
Okay.
Oh.
Does anybody need a clarification?
No, 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 I understand. So basically, what you're saying is, if it's 133,000, whatever, 333, they'll get 100,000. If it's more than that, you don't get more than that.
Correct.
It's okay.
But if it was 90,000, though, you'd get 75% of 90,000.
Point of information?
Yeah.
Does that mean only for a fiscal year, talking about fiscal year '24?
Year '24.
All right, then I'll second that.
Yeah. Okay. So you're, you're done?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I have a motion by Counselor Guyaski and a second by Counselor Parker, and that's to cap the allocation at $100,000, and we're rating it 7, 75% of the incoming dollars capped at $100,000.
So.
Yep, Counselor Jones?
So just so I understand it right, so let's just, in the other town, Willamette, or where it was, they get about $50,000. So it'd be 75% of $50,000, which is like $40,000. And if it came $100,000 or $130,000, they wouldn't get any more than $100,000, but all money is 75% of whatever funds up to a total of 100,000. Is that?
Correct.
That's right?
Right.
So if it's $10, they get 750.
Correct.
Okay.
Can I?
Yes.
I was just.
Clarification. So in terms of the, the practicality of distributing it, we won't know 75% till the end of the year. So, you know, would we be distributing 75%, you know, every time we get one amount in, you know, so that would have to be figured out.
I mean, I think that's the only way you could do it.
I know. That's why I was getting asked, so.
Unless it reaches 100,000.
Right.
Sure.
You're going to do it monthly?
No, I'm just saying, whenever, we'd probably go and get it, well, once they get going, we'll probably start getting amounts about the line. And we'll set, you, you know, we always have an agreement with any organization getting funds like these. We, I'd probably do, I would imagine quarterly would probably be what it is.
Do you need that in the amendment, or no?
Not the quarterly. I just want to make sure I understand that to be, just to make sure everyone understands you're going to, we're going to be doing 75% along.
Yeah, it's 75%. However, however, your department decides to, to allocate that, that's fine, as long as 75%. Counselor Parker?
Okay, so does, as a follow-up, so any balance left, if it was more than $100,000, will be placed in a special fund. Would you, I'm asking if the mayor will be able to, not mayor, Mr. Burt, come back and say, where can we allocate the next part?
Yes, we would have to, yes.
So in that, but it'll be in a holding?
So in that, but it'll be in a holding account?
Yes, it'll be separated.
All right. I can agree to that, and I believe that will help along the way, and we will have money set aside for other organizations if they come forward, and I can handle that. Thank you.
Okay. I would imagine I'll, I'll get those state reports after the finance director receives them, once they start coming in monthly, and I could actually share those with the council, just so you have a feel for how much we're actually getting along the way, so you're kind of anticipating where it's heading.
Okay. Counsel Franco, did you have a hand?
I did, thank you. I just wanted to say that I can support this as a compromise motion. I would also, just from historical, we, we have discussed a lot of these type of issues last time, and locally, there are not many organizations in Groton to distribute those funds to, unless you wanted to go with a list and go to different options outside of helping, you know, the youth with, from my perspective, there's not many out there that are going to help the youth and with living in the situation that they're living with, with families with addiction, and, but I would challenge our council for that remaining 25% to actually do the work and go out and find those places that are in Groton, and when the discussion comes back, everybody have, be prepared with what you would like to do. I, I do see some people that are, that do the work and put in the time and come forward with ideas and suggestions, and I would challenge all counselors to do the same. So thank you. Thank you for your, your compromised motion.
Counsel JaCombe?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I will reiterate some of the words spoken, I appreciate that compromise. I think that's how the work gets done, and as we kick off, how the funds are being used, let's remember that the funds can be changed at any moment, any time with the next council, incoming council, so let's not remember, let's not forget that. And it was said as well, that if you want a different organization, then maybe do the homework, reach out to those organizations, and see where that money, there's different organizations out there, but actually do the work, reach out to them, get that money out there. And let's get this, hopefully those funds, when they do start coming in, they're going to be coming in, working as fast as possible and maximize for our community. So, thank you.
Counsel Gieske?
I just do want to, the 25% also could be reallocated back to Community Speaks Out. So it doesn't, it, it can go there at the end, and in all honesty, I wouldn't mind it going there, and I could support that, I just want to have a compromise, just in case, you know, some organizations do want to come forward, and we don't know, organizations could start. So I just, I feel like having a little bit of protection fiscally would be a good thing, and that 75% is going to go to a great cause.
All right. Counsel Bordelon?
At this time, I can't put another motion, right? I have to wait for one to be voted down, right?
You can make another amendment. Well, wait, let me clarify. You can amend this amendment.
But I can't put a new one on, right?
You can't make a new amendment.
Okay. So for me, again, you know, the comments were made that other counselors should be charged with it. Again, the agenda item did not state tonight that we were allocating. It says we were looking over the proposal, and I think in full fairness, the agenda item, first, you know, when I, you know, when you look at other councils and other towns, the thing will come on as an agenda item discussion, so tonight would have been a discussion about it. Everyone would have threw up their ideas of what agencies we should probably reach out to, and then we direct the town manager to put these up on the website or whatever, and then it can come back to us way before the money's even allocated, and we can start to talk about distributing in percents and things like that. So tonight, I, I will not vote in favor. Again, it's not that I'm against the agency, it's merely because of process and fiscal responsibility, in the sense of, it's not on the agenda, no one else was invited to come tonight, and that's not what the agenda item. If the agenda item motion had stated, tonight we'll be voting on allocating funding, then that would have been a little bit different for me. It does not clearly state that, it says, "We're discussing the policy," and that's the way the referral's written. If you read the referral that Mr. JaCombe sent, it clearly states that we were going to having discussion, it, you know, it states here in the email that was sent. I'd like to request a referral regarding the update of the cannabis. There's point of information over here. Could you pause my time?
That's fine. Counsel Bordelon, continue.
Okay. I'd like to request a referral regarding the update of cannabis, to include an update on the current zoning regulations, which we're talking about, current and future businesses deals with cannabis, and future utilization of funds of the 3% municipal tax. I believe having discussion soon would benefit and urge support. So tonight, I came prepared to discuss ways in which we can move this, not allocate. It doesn't say discuss and allocate funds tonight. Again, it has nothing to do with the agency that was discussed, you know, but for me, it, it is very important that we're open and transparent. A lot of people did come before me about the opioid funds, and felt like there were other people that should have been on the list. I also, too, want to keep things in Groton, and, you know, as Joe, as elected, you know, Democrat in our town, he's a dear friend of ours, but that doesn't change the fact that I have to be fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Okay, I just got to say a couple things. First of all, Community Speaks Out was not invited here. This is, I didn't invite Community Speaks Out here, my manager Burt didn't extend an invitation. These agendas are public knowledge. If someone reads something, they keep track of it, they see this is coming up, anybody can attend here, this is open to the public. Second thing, as you read Counselor JaCombe's referral, right in there, it says future utilization of funds from the 3% municipal tax. It's written right there. Once these agenda items get to the cow, anybody can make a motion on anything that is in the referral. So a future utilization of funds is in the discussion points, someone can make a motion on the future utilization of funds. So that's just the way our process works. I'm sorry if some counselors feel unprepared. If you do feel unprepared, abstain or vote no. I personally know a lot of the counselors here have done a lot of legwork on this issue, independent of this cannabis money, independent of the opioid money, it's something that is close to a lot of these counselors, and they know the organizations in the community, they know what they do, they know where they believe the money will be best spent, okay? So if a majority of the council feels like this is the best allocation of the funds, and they are comfortable with voting on that today, that's what we can do. If you are not comfortable with that, that's completely fine. Apparently, we've got some compromise, where we're allocating 75% here, there'll be another 25% open, and if you've got another organization, we've already have a majority of the council, apparently, that support this organization. If you've got another great organization for the other 25%, I implore every counselor to reach out to other organizations, come forward with that organization, and, and they could earn that other 25%. So that's what I have to say right now. Is there any other discussion? Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Burt, according to this, I just want to make sure that these kind of funds aren't just assigned to organizations, nonprofit, nonprofit organizations, they could go to, like Sutton Park is something that we needed, or the pump track.
Yeah, there's several different uses there.
And so it can be used for municipal things, that maybe you're a little short of funds, or it can be used for any kind of organization. So we have full rein when we get to that point.
As long as it's under those six guidelines.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure that we've just picked one organization tonight, but, but in the future, when we look at it, there's many, many organizations that could come forward and ask for it, not just ones that deal with, with addiction stuff.
Certainly.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote first on the amendment of Counsel Gieske to allocate 75% of fiscal year ending 2024 cannabis dollars to Community Speaks Out with the, with a maximum benefit of $100,000. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay, carry seven in favor, two opposed, Bordelon, McBride, zero abstaining. Now we will have to vote on Counsel JaCombe's motion as amended. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Carry seven in favor, two opposed, Bordelon, McBride, zero abstaining. Thank you. We're-
Recede.
Sure. Council will stand and recess at 7:49. Council will stand and recess at seven forty-nine.
Thank you.
Council's back from recess at eight oh nine. Onto the adoption of CCOG, hazard mitigation and climate adaption plan. Andrew Burt, do you want to introduce?
Sure. The Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments has completed its multi-jurisdictional two thousand twenty-two hazard mitigation and climate adaptation plan for the region. Plan was approved by FEMA in late July and now must be adopted by individual COG members, including Groton. The primary purpose of the plan is to identify natural hazards and risks, existing capabilities and activities that can help the community to prevent loss of life and reduce property damage. It's updated every five years. COG worked with Resilient Land and Water LLC, who we have someone online from them to answer questions, to develop the plan and produce a set of actions for each municipality in the region. For two thousand twenty-two update, the COG worked with Connecticut Institute of Resilience and Climate Adaptation, CIRCA, to include climate-related hazards related to flooding and extreme heat. By participating in the Resilient Connecticut Program with CIRCA, climate adaptation was included in the plan. Adopting the plan continues Groton's eligibility for pre-disaster funds from FEMA, from programs including the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, Building Resilience Infrastructure in Communities Program, and for flood mitigation assistance. And I should mention that several of our, I know several of our planning staff have been involved in making, I did touch base with Megan Granado, who, she came in the middle of this plan. Megan's been here about, the resilience manager's been here for about a year and the support started before that, but she has been involved and reviewed it and approved.
Okay, thank you.
And I do have Victoria, I'm not sure, I'll say last name, I want to say Vert from Resilience Land and Water, if you have any questions on the plan itself.
Okay. Just one second.
Okay, I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution to adopt the Hazard Mitigation and Climate Adaption Plan Update two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-eight as presented, so move.
Second?
Moved by Melinda, seconded by Gajewski. Councilboard.
I think, I mean, to the town manager, there's not much to change here, I mean, the experts went over it, so it's pretty much pushing through. What, I mean, do you see any problems?
No, many people have looked at this.
Yeah, so the experts did the work, I mean, I think it's an important document to have and it's way above the council's head, I'll speak for myself, way above my head. This has already been decided by the experts and a plan was in place and it's an update to the plan, so that's, I said we just move it forward, thank you.
Thank you. Council Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Burt, how does this plan affect, I know we're starting the P O C D plan, how does this plan affect what goes on to that?
Well, P O C D, P O C D is basically a plan of conservation development. This is really a totally separate thing, that's how the town's going to evolve over time, what's going to be allowed. This is, you know, pure making us eligible for hazard dollars, for FEMA dollars. And then, of course, you know, it's more closely related to what the resilience plan, climate plan will be working on, but that's way more detailed. This is, you know, more of a broad overview, just, it's enough to make us eligible for this type of funding.
So that's where its real purpose is, is just make us eligible for FEMA money and this is basically our qualifying ticket.
Right, and we have to do it every five years.
Money if something happens like that.
Just like the other more detailed one we're going to do is required to get some of those other infrastructure dollars out there, so.
Council Gajewski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, a quick question for the town manager or some of our wonderful guests, thank you for coming to provide your expertise. I had a curiosity, were any other towns in the region that, did any of them like oppose the update? Or are they, or oppose the original plan in a sense that what we had approved previously?
I, I'll let Victoria Vert answer that, but I don't know of anybody.
Hi, good evening. No, so no other municipality or community in the region has been opposed to the plan. Like town manager had said, you know, every community is, they participate in the plan, so they, everything in the plan is coming directly from them. They're identifying their shelters and their areas of vulnerability to whatever hazard it is. So really the town or every community is creating their own, their own plan. It's, you know, reviewed by FEMA, by DEMIS, it's also reviewed obviously by each community staff, so several eyes go over it. So by the time it kind of gets to adoption, sometimes, you know, changes need to be made, but they're usually very minor, such as clarification of an address or something like that. But no, every community in SC CAG is participating, including the two federally recognized tribes, so.
Thank you so much. I will be in favor of this plan, I read this plan word for word. It was thorough, it was sound, it was informational, and I encourage all residents to do the same. I learned some things that I wasn't aware of part of the town, and I thank anyone who contributed to this document, because it is, it is a really work of art. So I will be in favor of it, and thank you for all for your support.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing on a call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, point of information.
Okay.
For the German.
Well, no, you're under other business.
Oh, you're under business, okay, I'm sorry.
You have to wait.
Sure. Well, yeah, so we're on other business, well, there was a motion to adjourn, no second.
I'll take rescind it if he has something to say to the business.
Well, there was no second, so, yeah, we're on other business.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, just want to let other councils know, Council Franco and I are working on a joint referral that will be coming to the council. The state of Connecticut passed a bill, Public Act number twenty-three dash thirty-four, which goes into effect on October first twenty, this year, two thousand twenty-three. And it's about establishing a Veterans Advisory Commission, or a Commission of Veterans Affairs, or they call it different things in place here. But basically, it's a referral to discuss and look at this bill and how it affects Groton and what we need to do for veteran services. And that'll be coming, we're going to work on it jointly and we'll be coming forward, so we hope your support when that, we get that written and bring it forward, so. That's it.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Councilboard, seconded by Jacob. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, we adjourn unanimously at eight seventeen.